For the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual, with liberty and justice for all.
Morning, everybody. Consider a motion to approve the agenda.
So I'll offer.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Sean, you call the roll?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppen? Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes. I consider a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by Aaron's, a second by Schmidt. Sean, we call the roll?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppen?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes. Move on to our opportunity for public comment. If there's anybody here with us, either on the phone or in person, who'd like to come up, please do so now. All right. Seeing no one, hearing no one coming up, we'll move on to Commissioner reports. Any Commissioners have a report they'd like to make today? If not, we'll move on to regular business. We have our first public hearing to consider an application for the transfer of a retail on-off sale malt beverage and SD Farm wine license to operate outside of a municipality.
I'm texting the applicant right now to see if they're coming.
Okay. Well, then we'll move on to our second public hearing. To consider the adoption of a resolution of intent to enter into a lease for a term exceeding 120 days and an amount exceeding $500. The subject area is known as Lease Site P2, a tract 2,800 square feet located at the Lincoln County Marvsky Airport. The proposed LSE is Premier Aviation. Morning, Bill.
Good morning. This is just a renewal for one of the airport leases out there. They're still subject to the initial 25 years with options on five years each. I believe they have, if I remember correctly, I think they have two left, and they're going into the, they're going into at this point in time. So since it's over $500, we have to have a public hearing in order to renew that lease agreement. And so we would just be asking you to go ahead and accept the resolution to go ahead and lease the hangar back to them again for the additional period of time.
Okay.
So moved, Madam Chair.
This is our public hearing. Is there, is there anyone in the audience or with us on the phone who wishes to either appear opposed or in favor of the application or the adoption? If not, I would consider a motion.
So moved, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Sean, we call the roll?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppen?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes. Motion carries. Chair, did you get a hold of anybody?
I did get a hold of them. It doesn't sound like they plan on being here. So I can, we can either call them and get the person that's transferring the license from their name to the other, but both parties aren't going to be here.
Okay.
I've talked to both of them. They're both in agreement of it. I think they've got mixed communication as to why they're not here today.
Can you just, what's the nuts and bolts of it as far as what do we want to do?
The truck stop out on I-29 is getting sold, and they're transferring the license to Senex. Or they want to transfer the license to Senex.
Okay.
The closing hasn't happened yet. That should be happening either later today or very shortly.
Okay. Is there, on the public hearing on item one on our agenda, is there anyone here who would wish to speak against or in favor of the application? Okay, if not, to consider a motion.
Madam Chair, I've talked to Paul about this, and I would move for approval.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? If not, Sean, we call the roll?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppen?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes. Item three on our agenda, Jesse Fonkert. Not seeing him here yet. Okay. All right. We'll move on then to item four on our agenda.
As you all may well have known, we've had another water leak in the old part of the courthouse. There was a break on the second floor up in where the holding cell was. The water went down the chase. It went into the clerk of court's office, into the bathroom, and started running out into their offices. We were fortunate that our deputy sheriff, when making the rounds, saw the water on the, in the clerk's office and alerted buildings and grounds, and they were able to go ahead and shut that off. Probably wasn't running for maybe two hours. But the water did make it into the basement. It did make it into the court reporters' section, and the water ran down over quite a few of the records. This is the second water leak in that area. The last one, I believe, was from the irrigation system. We have, I believe, auditor records that are stored down there. The court reporters and the clerk's office stores old records down there as well. So I just wanted to bring this to your attention that it's probably, at this point in time, with all the water lines that are running in the old courthouse, and they're above these storage areas, that when they break, these are the records that they are damaging. Since it's happened twice in probably less than a year at this point, I would suggest that we start to have a discussion about making some other type of arrangements in order to take care of those records. Because I don't think we can leave them where they're at.
Do we have anywhere else that we could store them safely?
I mean, we could look at other, you know, rooms higher up in the courthouse if there's anything that's not being used. But I mean, the state's attorney's office, we're on the first floor with our records, and I don't believe there's any water lines right in that room. I'm not sure if there's any other space here on site that's available. I didn't know if we could rent. They have pods and things that you could rent for storage. There may be some other buildings in town, but once again, they'd have to be something that didn't have water, and we have some type of fire suppression system. I don't know that this is a short-term ask at this point, but I want to bring it to your attention, start the conversation about us storing records under water pipes.
Right. What would we need to do? Would we need to do like an RFP for storage space? Or what do you think? And I don't know how much storage space is needed, I guess.
I guess my suggestion would be is that if one or two Commissioners, we could get a hold of John Rambo Building and Grounds, and we can start exploring things and then bring back some options for how we can go ahead and change the storage.
Bill, how much space is that issue here?
I mean, I don't have an exact number, but I was going to guess it's probably 1,000, 1,200 feet is what we're talking about.
There's a lot of records down there, and I know that they were trying to move some of those out and get it cleaned up, but there's still quite a bit of stuff.
So it's within the realm of possible, within the realm of possible, to find storage space. It's not to storage the size of this room, is it?
No, I mean, if I'm guessing, it's probably if we cut this room in half and you did it by, the clerk of courts is probably 300, 400 square feet, I mean, the court reporter, the auditor's office, they have a series of filing cabinets down there. And then the clerk's office has the biggest space, and that's where I'm guessing they're probably 800 to 900 square feet is what they need.
And we're allowed to store off-site, right? I mean, Minnehaha County.
They have done it.
Their clerk of courts stores records off-site, correct?
Yes. I do think this is something we should probably, you know, if we come up some ideas, visit with the presiding judge and Carl Tharnes, their administrator, about what we can and can't or what, you know, those solution type of things. But I just think with the two water leaks so close together, I just don't think we can justify leaving the records down there.
Bill, is there an ending date as far as how long these records have to be kept? I mean, is it forever, or is there a date after 20 years, 50 years, or whatever?
I believe for, I can tell you for our office, if it's a misdemeanor, we have to keep it for 10 years. If it's a felony, we have to keep it for 15. If we have cases where somebody's incarcerated for life or if they're, you know, for 40 or 50 years until they are released and they are off that judgment and sentence, we would have to store it. And so I'm not sure of the length of times the clerk's office has to keep them, but they can't be shorter than ours.
Do you need any action from us today, or just do you want a couple of Commissioners to volunteer to look into it with you?
Yes, that's what I'm looking for is some volunteers that we can just start this process, start the communications with the courts and the others, and see if we can come up with a solution.
I'll volunteer, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I'm open.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll circle back to item three on our agenda. Jesse? Good morning.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Commission staff. My name is Jesse Fonkert, 610 Parte Drive, Hartford, South Dakota. I serve as a President and CEO of the Sioux Metro Growth Alliance, which is the succeeding organization to what was then called Lincoln and Minnehaha County Economic Development Organizations, or lovingly referred to as Lakita Makita. I come to you today with an annual update as to what our organization is doing and some discussions about hopefully a bus tour we can host together in September. So first things first, budget is on our radar today. We're working on crafting our 2023 budget and adding some of, several items. To do that, we wanted to kind of nail down what we do for our communities in a better way. So we kind of went back to our past. There's a document here in your packet called our pledge of support to our communities or to our members. It kind of goes through, what exactly can we do for our, for our, our members? I'll just wait a moment here while that gets popped up, if that's possible. There we go. Our pledge of support, member communities, right above that one. There we go. Perfect. Thank you so much. So we wanted to look at what exactly do we do? We said, well, we're an economic development organization. Don't you know what that means? And most folks say, sure, which is a code for probably not, but just tell us some more. So we broke our items into, I think, nine different things of what exactly we do. So first, we serve as a resource to community issues regarding growth. And so this is where people can request us to come to meetings, to advise them, either the board, the county commission, the council, on what to do, what's going on. This is where we can really be physically present. We're a resource. We have been a resource for 30 years and will continue to be a resource. Next, we give each community a voice and manage the organization. So when we changed Lakita Makita into one organization, Sioux Metro Growth Alliance, we changed the board structure. So now each county, each city, and each public utility and the co-ops have a position on our advisory board. They meet monthly. Commissioner Aaron's is this county's representative on that board, and we discuss the programming of the organization and what's happening across the state. For example, we had the executive director of the South Dakota Housing Development Authority at our meeting, and I want to say it was April or May, talking about what may or may not be happening in July in concern to workforce dollars, right? We want to make sure our communities and members are informed what's happening across the state so they can position themselves accordingly. Their job is also to appoint our executive board, and our executive board is kind of the governing board of the institution. They oversee me, my staff, report to them, and they help us set a kind of the strategic vision for the organization and ensure that our programming meets the direction that we're heading. Next down to item number three, as we scroll down the page, would be, we create a strong connection with the Sioux Metro. It's kind of our networking events, including our annual meeting, our golf classic, which is happening tomorrow in Del Rapids. We rotate around the region as our way to connect people in both counties and our communities. We started a conference that's in its second year. We hosted that in Harrisburg this year back in April. The next year, we plan on hosting it back in Minnehaha County. And then, of course, our bus tours, which is an important event that we host to get the county commissioners, the county staff, city council members, mayors, board members together to talk about regional growth. Moving on to one, we advise on community development issues. Really, I think, an important component to what we do, I'm going to draw your attention to kind of that last point on four, which would be letter F. We want to create a leadership development program if we can find the funding to help better inform and educate rural leaders. And so we see that there is going to be this change happening. It's in place right now between the different generations that have been part of leadership for decades. They're getting off of those roles. Who is that next generation going to be? And we think to have good economic development, you need good leaders, and you can only have good leaders if they have the right tools at their disposal. So what we like to see happening is an annual program where we take folks, either elected or want to be elected, and put them through kind of a similar program to leadership in South Dakota, leadership in Sioux Falls, focused on economic development. BRNE's, which is our Business Retention and Expansion Program, that's where we go and talk to manufacturers in the area about what's happening with their business. Biggest issue we've heard recently is lack of workforce. I think it's hurting a lot of firms right now that could expand more if there was the workforce available. That doesn't even talk about the supply chain issues we're all experiencing. Moving down to item number six on the next page, prospect management. This is what we call kind of the fun part of economic development, working with prospects. I want to move into the area, helping them with the site selection, helping with the community, creating a financing plan, whatever it might be, really helping get that prospect to land. Moving on to the next page, we assist communities with industrial, commercial, residential development. There's been a ton of prospect activity the last two years, it's been a bit slower the last five months. Big issue that we keep running up to is lack of developed land. This has been a fairly significant issue across both Lincoln and Minnehaha Counties. Work on business and workforce attraction. This is one of the things we really want to pitch more in 2023 is hiring somebody and staff that can help with talent attraction efforts for our communities, working with their marketing efforts, their branding efforts, helping advise on what they can do to be more competitive in attracting the workforce of tomorrow. And then number nine, which is the program we launched in 2021, and I'm proud to say, three communities in Lincoln County are part of it, is our Economic Development Management Service. This is where we add staff on to our organization, and they work 15 to 20 hours a week in each community that pays an annual fee. All right, now we have six communities a part of this service that have our staff working them actively, proactively. They are Harrisburg. They just started. Worthing just started as well. Lennox was the first community on it. Del Rapids, Baltic, and the city of Salem in McCook County, which is our first McCook County member. So that's kind of our program of work that we're looking to really, sorry, that is our commitment to our communities. This is what we do for you, as we do for the county, and we're always looking to adapt and make this better. This document was approved unanimously at our board meeting two weeks ago. Any questions on this? Went through it pretty quick. It's really entertaining stuff, I know. So with that, we have our requests for 2023. Understand that budgets are tight, but we hope you see us as an investment. We always want to come and talk to you and answer for what we do, and we would really like you to consider investing with us for 2023. That document, I think, was supplied to you as the SMG investment for 2023 for Lincoln County. Again, we know that things are tight across the region, and we're trying to really, we are really sharpening our pencils because we know. I think we're asking for $15,000 from Lincoln County. We've been, 2021, we asked for a similar amount for 2022. Historically, we've been somewhere around the $12,000 mark annually from Lincoln County. With the exception, I think, of 2022, we are at 5,500, I believe. So the reason why we're asking for more is that we want to hire a marketing person. We think that that's the biggest issue right now is talent attraction across the region. I hear from our businesses and our BRNE visits, they need to find more people. They can't pay them enough. Well, we can't just manifest bodies. It takes 18 years, I think, and you can only do one person at a time. I'm trying to do my part. I just had a kid in May. It's my first, but unless you want to have a whole campaign related to having more kids, then I think the best thing we can do is talk about the great quality of life we have in the Sioux Metro, and especially in Lincoln County. So that's probably the reason why we're asking for more. We have our folded budget that is being developed right now, and you're going to get a program of work from me in the next couple of weeks that shows exactly what we plan to do with that money, and then goes through each budget item and gives you an explanation. It's going to be a really interesting document. You're going to love to read it. And I really actually mean that. I put a lot of time into it. I think it's going to be a lot of fun. This is what we're doing for 2023. So if you have any questions for me, take them right now. Thank you, Madam Chair and Commission. And the one last item, I think, or two more items for you as we go here. First, county bus tour. We had a great inaugural one last year. Want to do it again this year, hoping in September, if you'd be interested in joining, perhaps we could find a date or I can work with staff on that. We, I think we do usually about nine to four is the plan. We had Lincoln County communities outside of Sioux Falls and talk about what's happening there. We get a business visit in, probably tour the new wastewater treatment facility in Harrisburg, talk about wastewater. Love talking about wastewater, along with some of the other construction stuff happening across the area.
I think in your letter, you had suggested September 20th.
Correct. I don't think there's a commission meeting that day.
There's, it's the, that's the third Tuesday, so there wouldn't be a normal meeting unless we had a special meeting for some reason.
So you could do that. That's what, that's what Minnehaha County does. They take that, their off week, and they put it towards the bus tour. We're open to any Tuesday you want to do or any day, really, other than the third Wednesday, which is our board meeting day, which would be kind of awkward to miss it. I actually could.
What said it?
Does September 20th work for everybody?
Yes.
All right.
Okay, we'll have a letter out to staff and the commission, and we'll work on that. Really appreciate that. We'll also invite all the mayors from across the region to that as well. Last thing on here, I know we're pressed for time. I really appreciate you having me on the agenda today, is we're trying to put together a study to look into the future of wastewater treatment processing in Lincoln County. Now, we know T is connecting with Sioux Falls. The city of Harrisburg has recently built their own mechanical facility, and Worthing is at a point where we really need to have some pretty strong discussions. So the city of, the city of Worthing and the city of Canton have both agreed to go in on a study together, the study of the feasibility of a regional wastewater treatment system. If you've been around for 22 years, you might recall that we did this in 2001. Our organization back then was Lakita, worked with a number of organizations to put together a feasibility study on the same issue, that studied all five communities in Lincoln County. Well, the five that we work with anyways. At the time, it didn't seem feasible. There's a lot of issues with the northern communities in Lincoln County to connect to a regional system that we will likely be headquartered in Canton. But given what's happening right now with funding across the state and the country, we would be unwise to not look at the issue again. And so the city of Worthing and the city of Canton have both committed to it. The city of Lennox has not taken any action on this yet, but we're wondering if the county commission might be interested in supporting this study. The study cost is roughly $43,000 and change. We're asking in front of our partners to come in together at 25% of that cost. Now, I am excited to say that we did receive a grant, or it was notified on Friday, that Excel Energy is going to give us some money to help go towards this because they see the potential as we look to expand more residential and especially industrial and commercial in Lincoln County for, of course, you know, for growth. And so we asked for 50%. We have not received a letter exactly getting, telling us how much we received. We've told both the city of Canton and the city of Worthing that their max will be up to $10,000 and change, where the 25% mark is. I came in to you today to ask for your consideration to be part of this as well. So I really do think this could help move the needle for development and growth in this part of the county going forward. If the study comes back positive, which I think it will, it'll help us put together a regional system, think of a Lewis and Clark, but on a much smaller scale for processing the water that they bring up here. That could also help, really help with the balance of growth in this county long term.
Does your 25% then include the municipality of Lennox then? Is it Lincoln County, Worthing, Canton, and Lennox?
We asked the city of Lennox about this, and they've not taken, taken any action on the issue. And so it's not treating them as not being part of this.
Basically, that 10,812.50 could be more if they do not participate, correct?
I would have said yes before Friday, but we did hear from Excel Energy that we're getting a grant for this. We asked for 50% of the total cost of the study, which would be $20,000 and change. We haven't gotten a letter yet, seeing how much we received. I'm expecting it to be 50%. So what I'm asking the county to consider today is appropriating up to that $10,000 mark for this, pending what we hear back on the grant, how much we received on it, and then prorating that back, 50% grant, and the rest to be split between Lincoln County, city of Worthing, city of Canton. Has a great public-private partnership to help advance some growth in this part of the county.
Well, Jesse, as you know, Commissioner Gibbon and I have been participants in several meetings that you have had discussing this. And this isn't just to alleviate the situation for Canton and/or Worthing. It has a tremendous potential for the future growth of Lincoln County from virtually the interstate all the way over to the border. And when you think about following Highway 18, which is undergoing a remodel or to rebuild, being rebuilt, it's a timely situation to be able to implement if this study so warrants it, its completion. But I mean, the potential here is pretty hard to determine how much that really would benefit. It's astronomical from what, where we could be. You know, from the economic growth, mostly in commercial and in residential, it will change that corridor immensely. But as you all know, schools need taxes and counties need taxes, and this is a way that we can grow that. So it's a worthwhile endeavor.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Jesse, when do they hope to do the study, and when would funding be necessary?
Well, if we could have gotten the dollars put together quicker, they could have started in March. So the second we sign the contract, they can start immediately. We expect it to take 90 days to conduct the study, at which point our recommendation that we can present to each of the governing bodies that have supported it upon its completion.
Do you have any, is it in the share file? Apologize, my computer's not functioning. As to the scope of the study?
I can send that to you. I don't think I sent the, I think it actually might be attached to this brief. Might not be. I will send that over to staff, and they can get it sent over to you.
Yeah, because I too can, will look at supporting expenditures for this because it does serve a substantial part of the area.
Right.
But I don't have a scope in front of me of what it actually is doing for the study, so.
Yep, fair enough. Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you need, when's the deadline for your action on this, Jesse?
Yesterday.
Yeah, I mean, part of it is, we were, it takes a lot of time to work with governing bodies and setting dates and getting commitments. We're open to any discussion you have on this. If I get that letter from Excel, I should have received it yesterday, but I know they're still working through some of this information. This is a new grant program for them. It allocated, I think, $200,000 throughout eight states to help with studies or programs that might help create more industrial parks, more growth across their service territory. Once I get that letter from them, we'll know exactly what the amount would be. So for example, you could take action at your next meeting if I can get that to you.
The staff, the request in our, in the letters and the correspondence you gave us is $10,812.50, it looks like.
Yeah. And I think the engineering firm has been very patient with us. Their price has not increased at all, and this number was given to us three or four months ago. And so we've been, we've been pretty fortunate to have a good partner here.
We don't, we don't have that on our agenda to act on today, but you can certainly talk to the auditor's office about getting them put on there.
Sure. We'd be meeting next Tuesday?
We would be.
Okay, great. Well, thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Commissioner and staff, for your time today. We appreciate it, and thanks for your support of our organization and regional economic development. Thank you.
Thank you. Move on to item five on our agenda.
This is a, we're requesting authorization to sign a contract with Westlaw for our legal research. This was initially brought up, I believe, as Commissioner Aaron's asked us to go ahead and research on whether or not we could bring that cost down. So we had two attorneys that sat through multiple presentations from LexisNexis, I think they looked at, versus, and what we found was that if we stayed with Westlaw, one, everybody was familiar with it, two, we were able to get rid of two other treatises in the office because they would actually cover it. And so we're able to get rid of our planning and zoning treatise and the one on our labor relations manuals. So that saves us $50 a month. So when it comes down to the other, LexisNexis was competitive, but because we can get rid of that with this plan, we are actually cheaper with Westlaw than we are with their competitors. The other ones didn't have all the features that we need for the type of law that we practice and things that we get into from time to time as far as, it's usually the civil side. We're doing research. They just didn't have the resources that we needed. So this is $838 a month. It is based on per attorney in our office, and that's why. So this is eight hundred and thirty-eight dollars a month. It is based on per attorney in our office, and that's why it's increased from the past. So we just like authorization for the contract.
I would so move, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Have a motion and a second?
Who was that, second, Madam Chair?
Uh, Aaron's.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? If not, Sean, we call the roll.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
Motion carries. We'll move on to item six, approving a payment plan for three parcels in Lenox. Good morning, Deb.
Morning, Debbie Block, Treasurer. Um, I have a homeowner that, um, we're starting tax deed proceedings on three parcels in Lenox. Um, do you want me to list the parcel numbers, I guess?
Um, I don't believe so, unless somebody has some questions, but are you, you're requesting, what's the payment plan?
What they would like to do is put ten thousand dollars down and make thousand dollar payments for the next three years.
Each month, or?
Each month.
Okay.
Thousand dollar payment each month for the next three years. Um, and they would also have to keep their current year taxes current. If they default on the payment plan, then tax deed proceedings would begin, resume. Uh, the state's attorney's office, they help us with our tax deed proceedings, and they are in agreement with this plan.
Okay.
I would move to authorize.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Any further discussion? If not, Sean, we call the roll.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes. Next item, a payment plan for a parcel in Harrisburg.
Um, this homeowner also is, we're starting tax deed payment on, our proceedings on it also. And this would be the second half of twenty eighteen through twenty twenty-one. They would like to make three hundred and thirty-one dollar monthly payments for the next three years. And also, they would have to keep their current year taxes current. If they default, we would resume tax deed proceedings. And again, the state's attorney has approved this plan.
All right, thank you for the request. Is there a motion?
So.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? If not, Sean, we call the roll.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
We have our first reading. Sean, are you going to handle that?
This is a first reading for an ordinance of Lincoln County, South Dakota, amending chapter one five four, zoning sections one five four point zero two one, one five four point zero five seven, subsection eight, one five four point one one seven, subsection E, one five four point one three seven, subsection F, one five four point one three seven, subsection G, one, one five four point one three seven, subsection H, and the addition of sections one five four, one three seven I for cannabis establishments. Planning commission recommends approval four to zero.
Thank you. And when will that, when will that second reading and public hearing be?
I believe the public hearing is the twenty, is the end of the month, end of July.
All right, thank you. Move on to item nine on our agenda. Morning, Terry.
Good morning. Uh, this morning, I have two items before you. Um, both of these items are, uh, part of the twenty-two, twenty twenty-two, uh, bridge project that we have, uh, replacements uh, over by Lenox on Conny Road one oh three. Um, so, uh, first item is to, uh, execute agreements, uh, for structure forty-two dash zero one zero dash one hundred. Um, we have some perpetual easements and some temporary easements, um, to sign off on.
Can I clarify?
Yep.
Our agenda has a structure forty-two zero zero four.
Oh, my apologies. Sorry, I was at the next one.
Okay.
So yes, zero zero four is the first one, so.
Okay.
Zero zero four, one hundred.
Is there a motion?
So move, Madam Chair.
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion or questions for Terry?
Terry, what, what is it that we're doing here? Explain this again.
Uh, so this is, uh, so this structure currently is a couple of pipe, um, metal pipe. We're replacing that. That'll be a, a double, that's a eight by, eight by twelve, maybe, um, to be a double barrel box culvert. Um, that's, that'll be this structure. Uh, then the other structure is currently a bridge, and that will be, is that a four barrel box? Ten by, ten by eleven, something like that? Um, I'd have to look, but the other structure will be a box culvert as well. So, and again, these are both on the west side of Lenox. Uh, one is west of Quakers and one is south.
Yep.
So.
All right, we've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If, Sean, we call the roll.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
I'll abstain.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
I, I'll abstain, because this is my wife's property.
Okay.
Fair enough.
Good idea.
Next item we have is, uh, execute easement agreements for structure four-two dash zero one zero dash one oh nine.
I'll so move.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? If not, Sean, we call the roll, please.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have an abatement request.
Good morning, Nell Golden, Appraiser Equalization Office. Um, I am here for, to approve an abatement, or abate property taxes for twenty eighteen payable twenty nineteen, submitted by Schwartz Construction LLC for the property legally described as Holling Ridge, tract four, southwest quarter, section twenty-three, township one hundred, range fifty-one, also known as one hundred point fifty point sixty-three point G four hundred, in the amount of five hundred and four dollars and eighty-four cents. Due to replatted in March of twenty seventeen, the parcel should have been deleted. The error was discovered by Debbie Block during a review of back taxes. The twenty seventeen parcel replat was verified by Deputy Ethan Piesky and approved by Director Gosin.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions?
Second.
Thank you. Sean, we call the roll.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
Thank you.
Move on to item twelve on our agenda.
Good morning, Commission.
Good morning.
Hannah Mulder, Human Resources. So we have a new policy to place in our personal handbooks. I'll just read it as files. All media inquiries should be brought to the attention of the Lincoln County State's Attorney's Office for their review. Lincoln County's employees are not to speak to the media without prior authorization from a member of Lincoln County's legal team unless part of their regular and/or regular course of business. And that is all.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions for Hannah?
I got a question. Our county commissioners considered employees for the process of application of this policy.
This would exclude all elected officials. It excludes all of the department heads who normally would talk to, um, the media as part of their jobs. It would only be for, um, unusual requests that go to employees who don't normally interact with the press.
Should we write that in there, then?
That was the intention, but we can certainly go ahead and make that clear.
So it excludes all elected officials, you said, and county commissioners?
Yes. It is only the employees that would not normally, as a course of their, their conduct, have normal contact with the media.
And this applies to media inquiries, not anything else?
Nothing else. Me, we do have a policy in place that if attorneys or others call for legal questions or other things, they should refer them to us as well. We can, if you have some edits you would like, we're happy to do that.
Does it pose any problems with, uh, separation of powers in regards to one elected official's office pre-clearing a media inquiry from another constitutional, or shouldn't say constitutional, but another auditor or treasurer's office?
We, if it's the department head or the elected official, they would be excluded from this. So the ones who are really asked, we're looking at is for inquiries to somebody who's working in the treasurer's office, who they're asking for some information, they should have went to the treasurer, or they should have gone to, you know, if it's the highway department, then the attorney's going to talk or say something on this. This is really just so that individuals in the offices are not speaking for the county. Um, we've had an issue or two, not directly with media, but on some other issues where subpoenas have been generated from comments and things that have been said. And so this is just a matter of, before anyone says anything, we would like them to at least advise us that they've been contacted and there's some questions or things going on. Um, but normally, we, we're intending to direct them back to the appropriate official. If it's a county, and we've done this in the past, if there's a media inquiry, we'll refer to the county commission, we'll refer to a department head, we'll refer to the others, but what we're trying to limit is who's speaking for the county officially.
I guess my, my issue is not so much with the request, but the drafting.
Madam Chair.
I mean, just prohibit people from talking to the media. I don't, I don't know, it's a little broad and vague, so I think maybe we just need to tweak it a bit.
Madam Chair.
We'll bring it back.
Um, Mike, again, I, it's hard for me to tell employees they can't talk to. If we had language that said, any inquiries by media should be directed to their supervisor or the department head, would that clarify your concern?
We can certainly do it that way.
I like that.
I like that.
I would, I would support that, I think.
Do we already have that in our policy handbook?
No, I don't think we did. So we can certainly change that language.
All right, let's, let's tweak the language, so we won't take any action today.
Because are you always going to be available, the state's attorney's office, to make a comment?
We're not, we're not, it's not our intention to make the comment. It is ours to make sure that if the inquiry is made, it gets to the right person to answer it for the county. So if somebody calls, um, we'll pick on my office. If somebody calls s, a staff person inside of my office, they should understand that it should be referred to one of the attorneys, and then we'll direct it to the, where it should go. That was the intent, but that, you saw what there is, if we just have them go to the department heads. We're not looking for more work. We have plenty.
Thank you.
We just tend to always be available.
Thank you.
Okay.
Move on to item thirteen on our agenda.
At the, excuse me. Uh, what I'm asking for today is to authorize the auditor's office to publish a request for proposals for airport management. Uh, the current agreement ends after next month, and this would allow us to publish in the newspapers and our website, um, asking for new proposals.
I'll offer that motion and a comment if, after a second.
Second.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Madam Chair, as Commissioner Gibbon and I serve on the Airport Advisory, um, Group, uh, it is just the time and place to re-advertise this procedural matter. The current management would like to have it back again, um, but to make it equitable for everyone and fair that this is the procedure we should do, so.
All right, and looks like those RFPs will be due July fifteenth if we approve this. We've got a motion and a second. Sean, we call the roll, please.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
Move on to item fourteen on our agenda.
So we have, at this time, we have received both of our stipends of the American Recovery Plan Act, the ARPA money. Um, at this time, we have eleven million eight hundred eighty-four thousand two hundred and sixty-three dollars and nine cents. Um, some of that, of course, is interest that is accumulated off of that. Uh, during the final ruling, uh, the Department of Treasury stated that counties can use up to ten million dollars of American Recovery Plan or the ARPA as lost revenue for the provisions of the general government services without needing to use the treasury revenue loss formula. Um, what I'm asking today is that we take the ten million dollars of lost revenue and put it in the general fund to apply towards, uh, salaries and county paid benefits for the general fund. And the requested action, that, that's the resolution that I would need.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions for Sherry?
Sherry, if we had eleven million eight hundred plus dollars, what happened to the other million eight?
It's, it would still be in the fund. Um, there are, on the document that I included in the agenda, there's some final guidelines as to what you can use it for. We would discuss it and track it on, um,
Are they eligible to be used for salaries? That million eight?
Well, they probably can be, but the ten million that we've got now is, this is the simplest way to get the money used without having to do any federal procurement or any, um, obligating or anything else. I will go just into the general fund, but you could use the one point eight million dollars, I believe, in wages. I'd have to double check the final rule that I attached and make sure what all that is. But the ten million dollars is a dollar amount that you can use without.
That goes into the general fund, back into the general fund.
If that's what you decide.
And for our discretion to be used.
Towards wages and, um, benefits.
It can, the, so the money can only be used for wages and benefits?
Well, what's going to happen is the ten million dollars gets, um, allocated to the general fund to be used for wages and benefits. So it's going to increase the, uh, cash in the account for the budgeted money that we've already got.
So this money gets used for that, and then money that we would have appropriated for wages and benefits can be used for anything else, correct?
Which money that we would, oh, yes, basically, yes. Yep.
All right, we've heard the request to move ten million dollars of the ARPA funds into the general fund. Is there a motion?
Is there a deadline on this?
Yeah, it's, uh, twenty twenty-four. The money has to be allocated. Um, I am doing quarterly reports, though, and so at some point, I would think that we would, should make some kind of motion on it. This ten, this ten million, by moving this, it's the easiest, less documented, um, process that we can take.
Although, and I know we had, I think, talked about this some time ago, about needing to hire somebody to manage these funds if we were going to do something different with it.
Um, I would think that if you were going to start doing projects with it, um, the federal procurement that's required for federal dollars is quite extensive. Um, so, I mean, yeah, but I don't know why you'd want to do that when we can easily move the ten million.
Madam Chair, a question.
Sure, go ahead, Commissioner.
Madam Auditor, just for clarification, though, is it necessary to include four wages?
Yes.
Help me understand that a little bit more.
Um, because you have to have it allocated for something. You can't just say it's going into your general fund.
Okay.
So if we're allocating it for wages, um, it's basically covering the budget that we already have, so.
But our total wages annually is about approximately what?
For all funds, it's about eleven million this year.
The wages?
Yep, for all wages, all funds, including benefits.
Okay, so it won't carry over an extra year?
It will not carry over.
Very good.
Thank you. Heard the request. Can I get a motion?
So, one more thing. Commissioner Aaron's asked the question. Okay, so if we allocate this money for wages, the money we did have allocated for wages can be used for anything, right?
Alls you're, alls you're doing is increasing your cash balance. You're not changing your budget allocation at all. You're increasing your cash balance in the general fund. So what you have allocated as far as budget, it has nothing to do with one or the other. The only thing we're going to have to do is I'm going to have to come in and do a supplemental budget transfer from the ARPA fund to the general fund. Otherwise, alls you're doing is increasing your cash in the general fund. You're not changing your budget numbers throughout the, does that make sense?
Well, I mean, I'm thinking this. We have a budget, we're going to put together, it's going to have $11 million worth of wages in it, okay? That's who we got. We got ARPA funds over here, so I take the ARPA funds and I put them into whatever balance I got over here. That means I'm not going to spend the $11 million I had in the budget originally.
You are going to spend the $11 million that you have in the budget, you're increasing your cash only. But yes.
Okay.
I know, I know.
Madam Chair, I will offer the motion.
I've asked for a motion twice.
I will second it, Commissioner Poppins. Move the money.
Any further discussion? If not, Sean, we call the roll, please.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
No.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes, motion carries. On item 15 on our agenda, talking about a mid-year adjustment to all Lincoln County wages. Commissioner Poppins, you want to kick it off?
Well, Madam Chair, thank you. This came up, there are, well, not just then, but I think came to light a little bit more at our workshop session last Tuesday night, looking at next year's budget and trying to see how we can recruit people. I believe there's an issue immediate to retain people, because it is extremely difficult to find new people to fill vacancies, and I am gravely concerned that because of the way differential that we see out there right now in the market, we, I know of several individuals that either have or are planning on putting in termination requests, and I would like us to strongly consider making an adjustment to their wages currently and immediately to hopefully deter individuals from wanting to leave the county employment. So, thank you.
Thank you. You know, at the last meeting, our HR representative had indicated to us that we were 17.5% down from market, and so that is probably definitely contributing to our ability to fill these positions and even keep the employees that we have. The highway shop is unionizing, I think much to do with the wage issue, and so I would agree with your comments. I think if we're going to do something to make a mid-year adjustment, I don't know, I don't think we should do the whole, you know, bring them up, everybody up 17.5. But in discussing this with others, I would be looking for a motion based on comments that were made at the last meeting for a 10% increase for all Lincoln County wages, and then to make it fair, and we can discuss, we can talk about these in two separate, I guess motions probably would be, to bring the FOP up by 9.25 so that they are in line with everybody else.
Madam Chair, to be very honest with you, after our meeting we had on, on last Tuesday evening for our budget, Commissioner, our Commissioner Poppins brought this to our attention, and quite frankly, I was a skeptic, because I listened to our HR person, who has subsequently left, talk about the, our retention. And our retention, we had a 14% exodus, and it was down to 8%, so I thought, well, it can't be too bad, because we went from 14 to 8. And we had a talk, our chair and myself met with the highway department and the union, and knowing what they're looking at for compensation, I also took the time to go around and talk to department heads and find out what is the attitude amongst the employees. And there are, to say to a person they're watching what we're going to be doing this morning, or what we're going to do to adjust this thing. The other thing that I found rather encouraging but discouraging was that department heads are trying to find ways to increase salaries for their employees by reconfiguring maybe assignments, putting different categories into different things, different titles, to help them compensate for the wages that we currently pay. So we're not, we're not competitive. Quite honestly, we're not. I don't know that we can always be in the, in the same realms as Sioux Falls, because the employees of Sioux Falls have their own schedule, but they have ample amount of funds. But to talk to several of the commissioners from Minniah County on why they did what they did, and they wanted to get ahead of the curve, and said that they realized that they were behind, so that they made some major, major moves. So what Commissioner, our chair, Mr. Landine, has suggested seems like an equitable way of going about this. So if I understand this, Madam Chair, we would take 10%, and that would be an immediate situation like beginning July 1st, for example, correct?
I would, I would say the next pay period, whatever, wherever the pay period lands.
I think the pay period is the 19th, if you're going to this current pay period. Otherwise, we can do it to the first of the next pay period.
So it'd be pay period beginning?
If you were to do it with this pay period, it would begin the 19th.
Of July?
June.
Of June.
Okay. Otherwise, it would be the 3rd of July.
Madam Auditor, two questions I have. What would, do we have the funds, and what would be the, what would be the cost of doing that? For transparency?
So with the, with the 10% and 9.25 for mid-year, and then what would you think for, if we go based on what we said for COLA for next year, are you thinking 7.5 for budget purposes?
I would like just to know if we-
I know, but I, I, okay, hold on.
Just the 10%?
Yep.
Madam Chair, if I remember correctly, and sorry if my memory isn't as good as I hope it used to be, is we talked about a $12 million budget, simple math of 1% being, you know, 120,000, so if you take that 120,000 times the 10, you're back to 1.2 million dollar approximate annual adjustment.
That's my recollection of the discussion.
Okay, Madam Auditor, I rounded it quite largely.
Yep.
Commissioner Poppins, I've got a question. If we start this now, we're starting it at mid-year, okay? So they would receive, the employees would receive this 10% increase for the remainder of this year, okay? So then what happens to the first six months? If we were in January and we wanted to do this, and we wanted to give everybody a 10% raise right now, okay, well, we're going to give it at mid-year. So what happens to the first six months? Do they not get that, or is that put on for next year?
It would just be going forward. We could either do a pay period beginning June 19th, because we haven't finished that pay period, or we could do a pay period beginning July 3rd, and it would just go forward from there. There wouldn't be any going back.
Yeah. I would favor the 19th.
So the total cost to the county for the rest of this year is an additional 1.25 million, is that correct?
No.
That was for a whole year, wasn't it, Commissioner Poppins?
So you'd have to do a percentage.
So wouldn't that be about six?
Probably $6 million.
$600,000.
Six, yes, sorry, $600,000.
$600,000.
$600,000.
Yes.
Thank you.
And these are extremely rounded figures, plus or minus $100,000.
Do you need a motion of this effect to get this taken care of?
I would need a motion, yes.
I would so move that we would offer our employees a 10% increase with the last pay period being June 19th?
Beginning June 19th.
Beginning June 19th.
Would you include the six, or the 6.25, no, the 9.25 for the sheriffs, deputies, or the FBI, I want to say-
The FOP.
FOP, thank you. Is that, or do you want that as a separate motion?
I'd make that a separate motion.
I'll second your motion, though.
Okay, motion and a second. Any further discussion?
You know, I feel like the economic stimulus was started by the Trump administration, continued by the Biden. Now there's no economic stimulus, so all of a sudden, we're becoming the economic stimulus, Lincoln County. And I don't know, can we afford a bonus, increase insurance, and increase in wages? All three of those things? That's what they targeted last week, and, you know, I, I don't mind 10%, but, but then people have to realize, well, then maybe we aren't going to be able to give them the insurance package they want. I, I, I kind of question that a little bit.
Well, right now, they can't pay for the insurance package they have.
Well-
Commissioner Gibbon, I concur with, I think this was created by powers above us. The unfortunate part is the taxpayers of Lincoln County are now suffering because of it. One way or the other, it always comes back to them. And we have a situation where, as, as indicated, we're, we're not in, even close in wages to our counterparts. I think they utilized a lot of that free money, I'm going to use it that way, stimulus, to pay additional funding, because other people in the industries have used additional revenue to try to hire people. We're in an extremely low unemployment area to start with. We, we are a wonderful place to live, which is bringing other industries in, which are trying to compete with even those existing workforce. We are in a very dynamic time. I've said that, and it seems like it just compounds and compounds how dynamic we are. And I don't know, the choices are not do it, lose employees potentially, try to figure out how we're going to operate with less, because we already know that we can't recruit replacements. That has been evident by the number of people applying for jobs, how long it takes to fill positions. I just, I am very concerned that we have a, we have a solid workforce, and we're functioning with that workforce. I would hate to see that workforce shrink.
I, I don't have a problem with the 10% when we look at the big picture, but I, I would like to know more about health costs, because it seems to me that that was almost as big a issue as anything else.
And I think we're going to, we're going to be looking at that as we budget for next year. That was part of the discussion, so this isn't going to affect what the current plan is. We're not doing anything with the current plan right now as far as insurance goes. This is just the mid-year adjustment to the wages, so we will be looking at those other things, Commissioner.
You know, Commissioner, I, that's a good, you bring up a good point. But on the other hand, we got to face reality, I guess, and to have a competent workforce is a service that we got to provide to the taxpayers. So, you know, there's many different attitudes, many different ways, but I do know that we have a very, very good workforce right now. They're dedicated, they're committed, they come to work every day, whether it's from our highway department, or sheriff's department, or treasurers, or auditor, they all work, they work very hard. And sometimes we take that, that's for granted, but they look at their paychecks as well, and they wonder about their own compensation, and what should be their future, and what decisions should they make for their families. So these are not easy decisions at all, and guarding that tax dollar is, is pretty important. I know we all try to do that, but we do have this opportunity to adjust our wages to be competitive, and I think that's pretty important for our future.
Thank you, I've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Clarification, Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
I want to make sure that the motion excludes the FOP.
This motion is only for non-union Lincoln County wages?
Correct. Okay.
So what is the, what is the motion?
We need to have that specified in it.
Okay.
The motion, if I'm understanding it-
And I would second that clarification.
Is a 10% mid-year adjustment to all Lincoln County wages excluding union wages. If there's no further discussion, Sean, we call the roll.
Commissioner Aaron's?
No.
Commissioner Gibbon?
No.
Commissioner Poppins?
I'm disappointed that we don't have any, you know, some support on this.
Well, I, I, I concur with that, because at the last meeting, there were comments made specifically, Commissioner Gibbon, you said, are you sure 10% is enough?
Although, I'm, the discussion's over, I'm just disappointed, yes.
Thank you.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes, motion carries. Now we'll move on to a discussion about the FOP wages. So when I brought up the, the 9.25, my, I guess my thought process was that the contract was a 3.25. Other employees got, I think, 2.5 raised, so it was a difference of 0.75%. So if we are going to look to bring them up with everybody else, that was where the 9.25 came from. Discussion thoughts? When do we renegotiate our contract, though?
I believe we're two years in, we're starting on third year next one, so we'll start probably mid-year.
Next, mid-year next year?
Yes.
Nobody wants to talk about it?
Oh, I'll gladly talk about it, Madam Chair, I was waiting for a motion, though.
Well, we can make a motion. Somebody want to make a motion?
I'll offer the motion to increase theirs by the 9.25. I will disclose that unless I see you not in support, I will not support it, and let those employees then bring their grievances directly to the commissioners that do not support it. So, Madam Chair, I offer you the motion of 9.25 for the FOP individuals.
Thank you, is there a second?
For discussion, yes.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Further discussion? No further discussion? If not, Sean, we call the roll.
Is there, what is the clarification again on the motion? I just want to be clear.
The motion is to, since the 10% worked for the other employees, or that it was passed, to adjust the FOP employees by 9.25% as a mid-year adjustment.
Thank you.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, Sean, we call the roll.
Commissioner Aaron's?
No.
Commissioner Gibbon?
No.
Commissioner Poppins?
No.
Commissioner Schmidt?
No.
Commissioner Landine?
I'm going to vote yes, doesn't matter, but now everybody's got a raise except for the guys wearing the bulletproof vest, so. Anyway, that motion failed, so we'll move on to discussing a purchase of a Canton office building and relocation of county departments. It's my understanding that that building is pending sale right now, so I don't know that there is much discussion to be had on that.
Yeah, Madam Chair, the auditor just informed me this morning that Marcus Malin, the realtor, contacted her and said that they have an offer. So I guess at this time, I don't have any dis- So, uh, I guess at this time I don't have any discussion to add on that discussion point.
All right, thank you. I'm going to move on to item seventeen on our agenda. What?
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Uh, clarification, was it an accepted offer or they are entertaining an offer?
It says that, he just said it was a pending offer.
Just a pending offer?
They meant that, let me, hold on.
I received a separate text message from Marcus here and he states that the bank did agree to terms with the other group. He doesn't know who it is, they're a local party, they're represented by another local realtor. So, I guess if they accepted terms, I would assume that that means it's.
Thank you for the clarification.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Mr. Poppins, uh, our Madam Chair, could we go back to, uh, the nine point five issue one time?
The nine point two-five issue?
Yeah, the the previous, previous one prior to the building. Mr. Poppins, you indicated that you were, uh, you, you made the motion, but you voted no. I know, I, as I, so you wanted those individuals, uh, in the Sheriff's Department to come to the commission or come? They are unionized, so would the union person be the one that would come forward?
I would suspect it would be the union. I can't speak for them, but I hope they reach out to us either as a organized, organized discussion or somehow other ways that they deem appropriate, so.
So it isn't necessarily that it is in opposition to a raise, it is just maybe the process that they they go through?
I hope they reach out in some manner, so.
If you made the motion and wanted it to pass, why didn't you vote for it?
I believe strongly that this should be a unanimous decision, given the severity of the issue, and that was why. I do believe, I do believe it is the right thing to do, as I did on the ten percent. And I would have thought we would have had unanimous on that, um, which we did not, so.
Is it possible to have a substitute motion, Madam Chair?
Yes.
You know, I would, I would offer a substitute motion that we would approve the nine point five.
That was nine point two-five?
Nine point two-five pending, uh, uh, hearing from a representative from their union.
I'm not sure, I we, if we make a motion, it either passes or it fails. I don't know that we can do something contingent on something else happening, um.
Just a thought.
That's not to say that it can't be put back on the next agenda if somebody from the union wants to approach us.
I would ask to have that on the agenda.
All right.
Is there any further business, Madam Chair?
Uh, just budget discussions. Are we hearing from any of the departments today, Sherry?
Yep, today we have Veteran Service Officer, G I S, Planning and Zoning, Emergency Management, Coroner, and then I was going to go through some of my stuff, but probably not.
Okay. Do you have, do you have a list of who's first, who's second?
Um, well, Harold and Dr. Snell are here, so they, they can draw a straw.
Yeah, why don't? Yeah, why don't, do you want to come on up, run through your budget with us?
Okay, so the coroner's budget is on page ninety.
Thank you.
Are we waiting for it to show up?
Did you send me something and I didn't get it?
Just, just the original budget that I sent you.
Yeah, no, I didn't have that.
That's fine, that's fine. Uh, good morning, Commissioners. Um, so for this year, um, there it's hard for us when we're determining what kind to expect for the next year. Um, if you look back at the previous years, uh, and nineteen, we had projected it not to be a bad year for twenty, and it turns out twenty was a jump of about thirty-something cases. So, okay, that'll continue in twenty-one, and it didn't. It actually dropped back by about three. So then when we projected for twenty-two, we said, okay, it'll be a hundred and seventeen. Well, I don't know that we're really going to hit that number, uh, because looking at where we're at right now, I don't think we're going to quite get that high, especially with five months into the year with our numbers. I think we're going to be a little less. Right now, we're projecting about a total of a hundred and eight cases, which is still above twenty-one, above twenty. So I'm not sure where we'll end up with that. Taking into account, um, cost increases both for laboratory tests, transportation, which we haven't seen yet, but I do anticipate is coming. We unfortunately are seeing that we're going to have to raise the budget unfortunately quite a bit. As you know, this is one of those, if we don't use it, fortunately, it goes back to the budget. If we're under, then we have to ask for a supplement. So what we're looking at is an overall increase of fifty-two point eight percent, which would raise us from the twenty-two budget of sixty-two thousand, fifty dollars to ninety-four thousand, eight hundred. That is evenly in all three of our fields, the calls, the transportations and autopsies. That's pretty much evenly spread amongst all three of those areas based on the numbers. Looking at numbers again, uh, twenty was a bad year for autopsies. Last year was sixteen, a little better. We were somewhere between projecting seventeen, eighteen for this, uh, this year, which means what will next year be? Unfortunately, there's no way for me, every time I think we've got this figured out, we get a surprise one way or the other, unfortunately. If we were to look back at the twenty-one budget and compare it to what we're projecting for twenty-three, it'd only be a twenty-two percent increase over that one. So since the twenty-two budget was predicted to be lower with the new projections, the twenty-three is actually a pretty good size jump over that, but not so bad over twenty-one. Uh, we've looked, is always trying to find ways to cut cost. And unfortunately, I run into the same thing with Media County. How can we cut cost? The biggest cost again is is, uh, toxicology. I mean, that is a cost. There's another company out there who has tried to recruit me. When I look at the total cost within, we'd end up spending more money with them, uh, than if I stayed with the company I'm at. We have made a couple of minor adjustments with some cases, sending them to the state. Turnaround time difference there is ten days versus four weeks. So you, hopefully you're not waiting too long on that stuff. Our goal is to sign those cases out in less than thirty days. And that is about a, um, sixty-dollar savings if we can go to the state. But at some point, time versus savings is always at question. So that's where we're at right now with projecting. I know it's a pretty good-sized jump in there. We did not really increase the dollar amount we're requesting for calls. It's just reflecting of those calls. Uh, I know we have talked about not working with, um, the local hospital to try to keep them from calling us so much. There's two major hospitals that do, we get calls from. An example of why we're not sure that's the right ideal is we got over the weekend, got a phone call from one of the hospitals telling us about a case, discussing with physician, we felt it wasn't our case. Then unfortunately, yesterday I got a phone call from the state. The state felt it was our case. So then I spent over a half hour reviewing medical records to try to make a decision, is this really a case that I should be completing or not? Finally reached the decision it was not ours, reached back out to the state, explained the state why it's not ours, referring it back to the, the treating physician, it's why it really should be his. So if we cut out some of those calls, uh, those are the type issues that we have to deal with after the fact. And so I don't know if that's a good way to go, cutting out those phone calls. Again, can you convince the hospital not to call us? I don't know. We can make a recommendation, but I don't know if we can convince them to change the way they've done things. Agreed by no sense before I got here, so.
Dr. Snell, do we still have a same, the same issue with that entity requesting, that you and I talked about a year or two ago?
Yeah, that's, and that, and we also have to include the hospital here, because we do get calls from here, but not as many from this hospital. Fortunately, you know, we've tried to work with them as much as we can, but they still call us, you know. And we've been able to keep it going further than just a call in the vast majority of those cases. And so that's helped a little bit, because we don't see the extra calls after that initial phone call. But we still get that phone call, so. I, again, it's one of those things is do we want to try to convince the hospital to change their policy and procedures on something? And then would they do it? You know, and I don't know if they would. Uh, the, the caveat to that is you end up like the hospital we have in Sioux Falls, which never calls us, well, I can't say never. Majority of the time they don't call us, and then we're trying to figure it out, and then the family's delayed getting death certificates anywhere from a week to two weeks because they failed to notify us upfront. So, I, I don't know the, the best way to approach that one. I'm willing to sit down and talk with the hospital and see if we can come up with some better approach on that.
And their policy and procedure isn't necessarily medically necessary or necessary according to state law because the other large hospital chain doesn't do it, correct?
Correct, and that's where, like I said, we run into the problem with the other hospital is, is that there are cases, they, we just had one this week that I got notified about. Uh, individual was walking, tripped and fell, got a traumatic head injury, died from that, hospital never called us. So now I am one week after they're already in the ground, doing medical research, trying to get scene information, death certificate's done two weeks, um, after they died. And by state law, we're required to know, have that done in five days. Part of the problem with that is, is it takes that hospital physician sometimes one to two weeks to figure out it's not theirs. Where if they had told the nursing staff to call us upfront, we wouldn't have had that problem. It's a balancing act. You're going to go one way or the other. You, it's just one of those things unfortunately in our field, and there's such a turnover, you're talking about staffing turnovers in the county. Hospitals have such staffing turnovers, uh, so many locums coming in and out, they don't know the policies, and so they don't follow through with them. I see that even in Sanford, where we'll have locums filling in and they don't call us. One, two weeks later, we're discovering that. So it's a balancing act. I don't know the right way to go with it. But I'm willing, if, if we want, I would recommend if we're going to talk with the entity, uh, somebody from the commission, sit down with me, with that hospital, to try to explain to them why we think they should alter their policies on that matter, you know, so.
Thank you.
Any other questions regarding the budget?
So what was this, is there any rhyme or rhythm to why you asked for fifty percent over the two thousand twenty-two budget?
Just looking at projections based off four months of numbers, um, we ended up at that number. If I look at five months, that would drop just a small amount, uh, really not that much of a drop. And so looking at the total numbers, uh, we were projecting a fifteen or a sixteen percent increase in total number of calls. Looking at five months, that's seven percent. So there's a little bit of a difference there. The number of autopsies decreased by one with five numbers. So yours, that's one case less, that's twenty-five hundred. So again, you would see some savings in there if we went with five months of numbers instead of just four, which is what we had to have when we submitted our budget. But that's where that comes from, is based on those four months' numbers. And looking at how we have been trending prior to last year's drop. And I did not anticipate last year being a drop. I anticipated it being just as bad as twenty was. And unfortunately, in this field, I don't have a clear crystal ball unfortunately I can look at, so. Any other questions?
Thank you. Harold, you up next?
Emergency Management's on page fifty-six.
Good morning, everyone.
Morning, Harold.
My budget, as usual, is fairly simple. I don't, and it's, yeah, look for any increases whatsoever in it. One big thing I'll have to do maybe is buy a set of tires for the county pickup that I'm driving, so that's included in the budget already. And that'll be in this year's budget, so I don't foresee any increases in any line item that you see there. Salary and administrative expenses are paid fifty percent by the state through a grant from FEMA. And I think, are they caught up this year, Sherry?
What?
They're not quite caught up, uh, with the payments.
Reimbursed in your wages?
Yeah.
No, they're not.
Yeah, they won't, usually takes a little bit to get there, but we do get reimbursed for that, so. Any other questions you might have?
Thanks, Harold.
But, thank you.
John, you want to come up?
G I S is on seventeen.
Morning, John.
Good morning. I don't have, uh, changes to my budget either. The G I S, uh, budget is operational. Salaries, fees and contracts for the pictometry, bi-year, bi-yearly aerials. Repairs and maintenance, we have plotter maintenance due next year, a thousand dollars. Supplies and materials is paper, ink and mounting of maps. Travel and conference, we have user training and updates on our software that is virtual and next year may be in-person at conference, twenty-six hundred dollars there for one person or the virtual. To note, the aerials are going down or have gone down this year. And for the next three payments, that's a bi-yearly or a yearly payment for the bi-yearly aerials until twenty-twenty-six. There is an area error in this spreadsheet for the twenty-twenty-two total activity, I believe. Or is that the six-month figure?
Well, the activity would have been up to date as the, whenever I printed the report.
Yeah, okay, yeah, yeah. Many questions?
Thank you.
You're welcome. Would you like to go over the floodplain budget at this time?
May as well, you're here.
Yeah.
Do we know what page that is, Sherry?
I do. It's page twenty-six.
Thank you.
Floodplain management, that's, uh, gone down, I guess for two years. Uh, we used to have stormwater management studies, projects, scopes of work, C I P, that type of thing that we may have opted to do over the years. Uh, that is no longer in there. We now have twenty thousand dollars, uh, for floodplain permit reviews and consulting on floodplain permits. Uh, or development permits, I should say. Then there is also in floodplain, uh, I am certified as floodplain manager with the Association of State Floodplain Managers. We have a new staff in, uh, planning and zoning. They may also be certified in that same thing. And there are conference training on the updates and administrative activities associated with that.
John, I'm, I'm sorry if I missed this, the fees and contracts. When I look at the twenty-one activity, that was at twenty-six point two thousand. So you were, it was a little over budget. Well, you only budgeted then twenty thousand. In twenty-twenty-two, do you think you're going to end up over again? I'm, I'm just curious, since you left it at the twenty thousand.
That's just what I estimate. Uh, there could be more, yes.
Do you have any contracts coming due?
No. Uh, I did have, uh, three thousand to adjust that figure of costs, uh, just recently. Bring that up to six thousand, approximately so far this year. There is increased demand, uh, because of development, uh, rezones, uh, you know, everything going on, the growth. And so there will be more of those reviews. Part of that is covered in the planning, uh, for subdivisions and that. They do drainage reviews in those as well, so we see those coincide, uh, in some of the developments. This is mainly for the, specifically for the floodplain development. We're also not having floodplain development permits. Uh, people are moving their development out of the floodplain because of costs and all of that, so. Uh, we're having success with that. The new ordinance is helpful with that as well, so.
Thank you. Anybody else have any questions? If not, thanks.
Thank you.
Which other ones did you plan on doing today, Sherry?
I don't know. I, after we, uh, had the last budget meeting and I didn't have the forms prepared, so I will hold off till next time. But then we got Toby here. He's on page forty-two.
All right, you want to come on up, Toby?
Uh, good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Um, so as far as the request, uh, from our office for the twenty-twenty-three budget, I would call it a status co-operational budget. If you go through line items, uh, you don't see. If you go through line items, you don't see any increases except for fees and contracts. I visited with you in the past, and we've discussed this, that I budgeted this for 2023 for an update to the conference and plan. So you'll see an increase in the fees and contracts portion of that. I'm anticipating that cost. I've researched with some firms a little bit, but we'll go through more of a formal process with it. But I'm anticipating that for 2023, the cost would be approximately $150,000. So I budgeted that.
Anybody have any questions for Toby? If not, thank you.
Thank you.
What page was that?
So if you wanted to talk about some of the ones that I do, I, most of my, the budgets that I do, the predatory animals, everything else has stayed the same. You've seen what Jesse's request today. I do have a spreadsheet that shows what the outside agencies are requesting. At this time, I have four or five people that sent me in an actual what they were requesting. No other documentation, just what they said. So I've got that on the spreadsheet. I'd like to take the information that we worked through today and go through this afternoon, and I will get you updated budget worksheets so we can see the whole effect before we go any further talking about. The ones that I've, the ones that, the budgets that I have, mental illness, all those ones that I, I just kept the numbers pretty much the same, possible slight increase, 5%. I'm working with the folks in Minnehaha County to make sure that the budget for support of poor is in line, so I'm waiting to hear back from them. Other than that.
All right. If there's nothing else, then I'd consider a motion to adjourn.
Bill does have an executive session that he wants to do with you.
Okay.
It's going to be under... Number three.
All right, I'd ask for a motion to go into executive session pursuant to SDCL 125 sub two, or, excuse me, 125 to subsection four.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. John, we call the roll.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
He's not here.
Oh, thank you. Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
And I just texted Bill and said that you're ready, so he should be down. I don't know, I'll email out the new budget worksheets to you guys.
Consider a motion session.
So moved, ma'am chair.
Got a motion and a second. Sean, we call the roll?
Was that second by Aaron's or?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Aaron's?
Uh, yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
I'm saying it wasn't an exec-
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes. We consider a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Thanks.
Second.
John?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?